Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April 15, 2020 special meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. Ask Ms. La Magna for a roll call.
Commissioner Traeger?
Here.
Commissioner Delgado? Commissioner Delgado, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm here. Sorry, I had the phone muted for feedback.
That's okay. Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Gillan? Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here.
Okay. And we'll move on to item number two, which is... The Resolution Extending the Local State of Emergency and Adopting Emergency Procedures.
I'll move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Are you going to read that in?
Yes. That was Commissioner Traeger and Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Thank you. So the resolution for that is a resolution extending a local state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus for an additional seven-day period ending April 22, 2020, adopting emergency procedures for meeting for public meetings of the city commission and providing an effective date. Do we? Commissioner Traeger was the motion and Commissioner Reed was the second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any comments or questions?
I would like to point out that there are procedures set up in this resolution for public participation, both online and in person through written questions in the lobby being left. And the intent is, as the meeting goes forward, if someone has written comments that are left outside in the drop box, they will be circulated to the commission before the vote so that we can comply with the Sunshine requirements.
Okay.
And Ms. Brown is doing that now. She's passing out the comment.
So Mayor, if you would, before we take a vote on...
I'll allow the comments to be circulated to the commission.
Is it on this item? Is it on the resolution?
Comments?
We'll take comments on this item as well.
Yeah.
If there are any. And Ms. La Magna, if you could just indicate again for the record, you know, what is being circulated?
A public comment by John Nicholson is being circulated about the extension, so it is must be about this item, though he didn't write in the agenda item number on his form. Yeah.
Was this an online submission or in-person?
This was an in-person submission.
That's what I was wondering, if it should just be read, but I wouldn't feel comfortable trying to read it.
Yeah, that's what he said. Twenty million. Thank you.
Wow.
It doesn't really apply to this resolution, but it's just a general comment.
Okay. All right, no other comments?
And Jim, when you when we did the care program, you said we had eight million and we're going to spend half of it on that.
That's right.
As typical John fashion, there's not 20 million in emergency funds sitting out there. There's eight. There was eight, now there's going to be four. So, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any other comments from commission? All right, here are none. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries. Commissioner Delgado?
I'm an aye.
All right. Motion carries, seven zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
They told me to try to watch it on my TV, on my video, and the video is delayed, so I'm not going to, I'm not doing that. Next time we do this, if I'm not in person, I'll, I'll have to go back to another method or something. The video method we did before was preferable. So if there's a, if there's a delay on my end, it may just be that I'm catching up with the closed circuit.
Oh, okay. I'll remember, try to remember that. Okay.
So we're going to move on to, and item number three describes the, these procedures that we're going to use for the emergency meetings. And item number four is going to be our consent agenda.
All right. Okay, do we have any?
Actually, do you want to check to see if he had, Kay, will you go out and see if he submitted another request for consent? Oh, double check, yeah. We want to give him the opportunity to participate.
The resolution on the dais about first step shelter?
That's going to be added after.
That's going to be, okay.
There should be two.
Yeah.
Yep.
Two or three things.
What's that?
The audio outside can't be heard, guys.
This needs to be louder.
Wonder who's out there?
No, no other comments on this item.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments from commission? All right, there's none. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Pretty good. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Do you want me to bring these up?
All right.
Mayor, we do have a couple of add-ons. The first has to do with the neighborhood meetings, which is an item that Commissioner Gillan had asked to be added on to the agenda.
Yeah, so I got a call from Mike Snapstaller. When we had gone through this conversation about having, about not having neighborhood meetings at all, I think we all agreed that we wanted to continue them, but we thought that it was okay to do them virtually during the emergency declaration. And what, the way the resolution read was that they had to be, there had to be an in-person meeting and a virtual meeting. And the request was that we not require to have an in-person meeting, but do all of them virtually. Now, he's told me that their capacity is up to 100 people per virtual meeting, so if they ran in a situation where people, you know, they had more than that, they would simply conduct more than one neighborhood meeting. For example, the Clor project that I mentioned at the last meeting had about 200 people in attendance, so they would have conducted two or three different virtual meetings to make sure that they had an opportunity for everybody to participate. But I do think that, you know, the current environment, we don't want to require any public meeting, in-person public meeting. And this resolution would rectify that to say that only during the emergency declaration, the neighborhood meetings could be conducted, would be conducted virtually only.
And I can read that into the record. So, resolution modifying neighborhood meeting procedures required by the city's land development code while the city's local state of emergency is in effect, subject conditions, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date.
So I'd make a motion that we approve this change to the resolution.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
Do we have any public comment on this?
He said he was going to do a public at the end that would be distributed to the commission. Said he was going to fill out a form.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I don't know if anyone else in the lobby, could we just check the box to be certain?
Sure. Nothing else in the box? Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any other comment on this issue? All right, I also received a call from Mike to agree with that wholeheartedly. All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero. What's the other item?
And then the other item that was presented on the dais was related to the first step shelter and the continuing use of the legal services of the city attorney's office. And I can read that resolution into the record. So, resolution approving the Second Amendment to the agreement between the city of Daytona Beach and First Step Shelter, Inc., extending the provision of legal services by the city attorney's office to First Step Shelter until June 15, 2020, authorizing the city manager and the city clerk to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
Second.
All right, we have a motion.
There were no more comments in the comment box.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'm sorry, and who was the motion in the second?
Gillan.
Gillan and Traeger.
Okay, thank you.
For the record, no comments in the comment box.
Correct.
Yes. All right, we have a motion, we got a second, we have no comments in the comment box. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
This is the last item that I have.
All right, that's the last item. All right, all right. Who do we start with?
For the special meetings, we usually start with zone one.
Oh, when we have this, okay. Commissioner Traeger, do you have any comments?
I just had a question from one constituent about on the northeast corner, before you go over the Broadway Bridge, there's some construction or something going on. They wanted to know what it was, and I wasn't sure, so I told them I'd try to find out today.
I don't know either.
Huh? You don't know either?
The Broadway Bridge is the...
Broadway Bridge, the northeast corner. Oh, okay.
Where's the Broadway Bridge? Speedway, okay.
Sorry.
Broadway is old term.
Yeah, well, they're probably just, they're replacing a fence, I think it was there.
Thank you.
I didn't know the Broadway Bridge.
Okay.
Well, I didn't know what was going on. I figured this was a good...
You know, Jim, it's the bridge at the end of Volusia Avenue.
That's what I was thinking.
I still don't know.
Commissioner Delgado?
No comments, feeling.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner May?
Yes, I've got my list, so Commissioner Gillan, I have a question for you. Do you have any new numbers for us with regard to, or does our health area have any numbers for what's going on in the city? Could I get some, please? Any updates? Oh, sorry. Thanks.
Coronavirus binder. Drew Driscoll, deputy city manager, fire chief. At the time of this meeting, the five o'clock update has not come out, so based on the 10 o'clock numbers, there's 233 positive cases in Volusia County. That's 0.04% of the Volusia County population are positive. In 32114, there's 18 cases. 32119, less than five. 3211, 32124, 12 cases. 32118, five to nine cases. In Daytona Beach proper, 37 cases, which is 0.05% positive of our population.
And then in the 32114, you said there were 18 cases. Off the top of your head, do you have any idea how many there were last week in 32114?
I brought my binder, but I did not bring that file, but we have been tracking them.
It's up just a couple. It was 14, so I think.
Yeah, 12 to 14.
Yep.
So I think we share a concern, Commissioner Reed, with regard to the 32114 zip code. So I'll say a little bit, and then I'll let you say the rest of it.
Halifax Hospital's in 32114, so anybody who shows up there without an address and tests positive is going to look like it's a 32114 when it's not.
So what I've been doing every week is I've been calling both hospitals, Advent as well as Halifax. And the specific question I have is, what is the racial profile looking like? Where are these people coming from, et cetera? Because I want to make sure that we're getting information to the minority population. We've cut off the churches, some of the natural places people congregate, hairdressers, hair salons, barber shops, we generally get information. We're not doing those kinds of activities, and people are limiting their interactions. So finding a way to continue to get information out becomes important. I recognize that we have lots of sites listed back here, but we still have to let them know to go to these sites. So that is just a little concern of mine. I'm sure Commissioner Reed will comment further on that also. But I have contacted the hospitals on a weekly basis, sometimes twice a week, to find out, I want to know what it looks like, because we're hearing nationally that the minority community is not, they don't have the same access. It's there, but reaching it is a bit of an issue. And so I just want to make sure that we are not falling into the same situation, especially since we are a strong tourist economy and many of our workforce is in the 32114 zip code. So it's just something for us to keep an eye on, that's the first thing. The second thing is, we're still looking at doing some food drives, and we had one last week, went really well with Reverend McGala, Housing Authority, that went well. Probably want to try and do another one, so if anybody is out there who's willing to do like a drive-up food drive, please contact us. Last week, Windsor Mealy, which is in zone three, had the pleasure of a live harp performance. Her name is Melody, and she stood outside Windsor Mealy and played for 400 residents on Easter morning. And what you don't realize was that it was her birthday as well, and so that was her gift to the community, and people came from all around. So even in these trying times, people are still trying to keep an optimistic attitude. So thank you to Housing Authority for that. And then two things. How are, how is our workforce doing? How are our employees doing? Any more cases? We had an issue last week. I was curious about it.
Right now, from employee perspective, we have no current COVID-positive employees who have reported into us anyhow. All employees continue to receive full compensation during this time and follow all CDC guidelines that are currently in place. And we also do the employee health, continue to do the employee health screening for all employees coming to work.
I think that's fantastic. Thank you. And then two, well, two issues. You know, this is not emergency-based. I would very much like for us to take a look at the Ortona-Aceola school concept that's coming, combining two schools into one between Ormond Beach or Daytona Beach. I wrote a letter to the school board in support of having the school on beach side, stay at Ortona versus Aceola, so I'd encourage you to look into it and see if you feel the same way. I will tell you that Ormond Beach right now, they're putting, there's a strong push, they're submitting letters of support from all parts of their community, saying that they would like to have the school in Ormond Beach. So something that we might want to research or get more information on, so we're on top of it. They had their first informational meeting yesterday. Ready? And I think that that is, that is it. Thank you so much.
I'll just comment on the Ortona situation. I've reached out to four of the board members, and I would encourage you all to let folks know your position, either by letter or if you have, you know, good relationship or no relationship with them, just let them know how you feel. I think it's important that we try to at least explain why it is beneficial to our community to keep that school open. There's a number of reasons, I think, just from a decision-making perspective, if you take the politics out of it. It is a better site. It has more land, it is further away from the ocean, and from what I can tell, the majority of the students who would have to travel, if you moved it to the Ormond Beach site, students would have to travel a further distance. And you'd also have to end up moving more students, because our site has more students. So it's, there's just a lot of different reasons why it should be maintained in Daytona Beach, not to mention the political reasons, if you name all the schools that we've had closed in the community over the last 15 years or 20 years even. Go back to South Daytona, North, South Ridgewood, North Ridgewood.
Bonner.
Bonner. And I think there's one other that's, that we've lost in the city of Daytona Beach as it relates to elementary schools. And if you would add to the fact that it's a well, it's a school that's performed well, and we need, you know, just from a realistic standpoint, the Daytona Beach demographic needs to have some schools inside of our boundary that meet the standard of B or A grade.
I made a point of contacting Housing Authority, and I asked Ms. Bates to put together a little brief for me with regard to why it matters to Housing Authority to have the school in Daytona Beach and what the impact would be across the board between, and it's just a comparison of, you know, what are the thoughts of Housing Authority, how it would impact the local community to travel, the parents, and some other issues that we may not be considering, but that definitely are valid. I'll share that with you when she gives it to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gillan?
Let's see, a couple things. So there's been, and this is going to persist for quite some time, but, you know, we've got the golf course at Indigo closed, we've got the south course at Pelican Bay closed. I had reported a year ago that I had met with the development team from Colin John, the owner of Indigo. That was March of last year. He had met with the manager prior to that and some staff that that team had. There seems to be some confusion in Pelican Bay, thinking that that meeting was actually about Pelican Bay, and it was not. That meeting was about Indigo. I have never met with the developer that's interested in doing something in Pelican Bay, but there was some documents that they shared with city staff about a month and a half to two months ago. So about a month ago, I shared copies of that with the Pelican Bay Board of Directors. That board consists of all of the sub-association presidents. There were copies available for, you know, residents who were interested. There's eight, there's over 1,800 units in Pelican Bay, so it's a little hard to get information out in there. But it is, you know, it's, for almost everybody, your biggest investment in your life is your home. And when these things happen, you lose 10 to 20% of the value of your home. It's, it's a bad situation in both Indigo and in Pelican Bay. And, you know, we're doing what we can to try and make sure that there's as much transparency as possible throughout the process, which is why, once there was a public document that was submitted to the city, I made sure it was shared with, with the people in Pelican Bay, so they would have a chance to see what this can, what the concept was. There was not much to that conversation. The developer that showed up did not have an authorization from the owner of the club to speak on his behalf, so it was a 30, 40-minute conversation, from what I gather, with Mr. Morris, and I think Mr. Marzak was in there for, for some of that meeting. It was really sort of a high-level thing. Two different conceptual plans were shared with what might happen on the south golf course. And, you know, that's the document that I was, that's been shared with the Pelican Bay HOA. At Indigo, we haven't heard anything out of them in a year, so we really don't know what's going on over there. And in both cases, the owners of the golf courses are trying to decide what direction they want to go at this point. Neither of them had made an application to the city. You know, you know, they have the right as property owners to ask questions, to ask for changes. We are not under any obligation to say yes. We would weigh it on its merits. And, you know, and Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe when we were talking about LPGA, you and I both publicly said that, and I think the rest of the commission, no one objected, that as these things go forward, you know, that we were really not in favor of making changes to land uses if the communities within which these lands are located aren't in agreement with those changes. And, you know, we're seeing that, here's the possibility of happening at LPGA as well, although that is less likely. But we know there are active interests, both at Indigo and in Pelican Bay, to do some sort of redevelopment that would dramatically change those two communities forever. Once again, we don't have any more information than what's already been shared. The meeting that I had with the Indigo Development Team in March of 2019, they did not provide any documentation, but I wrote up a summary and shared it with the different unit presidents in, in Indigo, which they in turn shared with, with the folks that live in their areas. But, you know, there's, this is a, it's an uncomfortable time for everybody, because there's so much unknown at this point. And, you know, all we can do is just try and be as transparent as we can, and, you know, Jim and Chisholm, Jim Morris, you know, have been great about, you know, letting me know that, you know, honestly let me know they haven't heard anything. And I'm sure that once, you know, somebody does show up and make an application or float another round of questioning, that we'll be able to have information to share with, you know, with the residents of those, of those communities. Jim?
Mr. Mayor, along those lines, recognizing there's going to be more activity along that will possibly impact a lot of homeowners. We went back and looked at the code, and there's some elements in the code prior to this last revision that provide a degree of protection and what the staff, I've asked them to go back and pull it out, and let's take a look and see what it, what was in there previously. And it may be something the commission wants to address as it relates in considering these, these issues that are coming forward. So we, we don't have it available right now, I just got with them today. So we'll bring back some additional information.
In that, you know, there is a significant difference between the Pelican Bay situation and Indigo. Indigo does not have a development agreement with the city. Pelican Bay does. And within that development agreement, it lays out all the land uses, which include both golf and recreational spaces for the tennis and the golf that are located within the development. So this has been going on since I was elected back in 2005, you know, that somebody's continually showing up and wanting to do something either on the golf or the tennis areas. And the, the answer has always been that somebody has to apply. That agreement, there's two parties to that agreement. The city is one party. When it was started, it was Jerry Johnson was the other party to the agreement. Once it was more than half built out, it transferred to, to Pelican Bay. And, you know, I do think that clarifying in the LDC, you know, Jim and Bob, you know, that process to make sure that, you know, that they, you know, everybody has their, their say when these types of things come forward is important protection that we need to afford to the folks that live, you know, in this case particularly in Pelican Bay. But it will affect the folks that live in Margaritaville, Bayberry, LPGA, you know, a lot of these developments that have, that were, that were planned developments. You know, we want to make sure that those folks, you know, don't get left behind when, when these types of questions come up. You know, certainly, we don't expect to hear anything like that from those other developments anytime soon, but we, it's certainly going on right now in Pelican Bay, and, you know, I look forward to that, that change coming forward. That was my long one. Let's see, what I, wait, let's see. East ISB, I've just been poking around, trying to figure out if there's anything more going on there. You know, I think there's been some concern from different traffic engineers about whether or not that roundabout wasn't going to cause a problem with the beach approach. The county is really kind of in charge of that, but, you know, the last meeting was on March 11th or 8th, it was that week. Jared Perdue, who was the acting District Five Secretary, was in attendance at that meeting. The, you know, there was, when we had the meeting at the Peninsula Club, they had done about a dozen different models. What they brought forward was the one with multiple roundabouts, the one with the single roundabout, and then the no build. There was another model that was done for an enhanced signalized intersection. Secretary Perdue was actually, you know, was relatively new to the district, he was not aware of that. So at that meeting, he, he said that he would go and talk with staff about dusting that thing off and taking another look at it to make, you know, to see whether or not, based on new information from the county, what makes the most sense over there. But unfortunately, obviously, there's a lot going on in the state with lockdown and everything else. That doesn't appear to be going anywhere at the moment, but we will have a public meeting once the safer home order is lifted. One other piece of what I think is good news out of District Five is that it appears as though the state forgot to convey ownership of the Timoca River Bridge on LPGA to the county. is that it appears as though the state forgot to convey ownership of the Timoca River Bridge on LPGA to the county fifty years ago, which means the state still owns it. And then when it gets widened, it's going to be their responsibility. That creates a completely different funding environment for that bridge getting done. Under Secretary Shannon, prior to his departure, he had recognized that making improvements to the LPGA overpass without fixing that bridge was not money well spent. And he was recognizing there needed to be some kind of partnership in there. This new information that the state actually is responsible for that bridge, you know, is is helpful to that moving forward. That is the biggest beef that everybody who lives on that side of ninety-five has is the bottleneck that occurs every rush hour at that little bridge. So that is something that has shown up in the last couple of weeks, but I wanted to share that. And and lastly, my hair is getting awful long. And so I think I'm going to do, I'm like, have my kids watch YouTube videos about cutting hair. And and I got some clippers. And so I may come in looking a lot like the mayor at the next meeting if this doesn't go well. But it's like out over my ears and I could almost, it's not quite ponytail disc length yet, but I'm not going to make it to the end of the month.
Can I ask you a question? Commissioner Gilliland, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Can you go back to the lights issue? Are you saying the possibility exists for no roundabout, but instead timed signal lights?
It would be, well, what the, so when Franco Day was, had his role with planning with District Five FDOT, he was the one who told me that he referred to as an enhanced signalized intersection. And really what it did was it had additional turning lanes. So the right-of-way need for that is different than the right-of-way need for a roundabout. Fairly significantly in some areas. So, but it did provide a capacity enhancement is what, which is what FDOT requires to get funding for something like this. It's, you know, twenty some odd million dollars. So the the ask was that they go and dust off that particular model and compare it to the roundabout, particularly using better better data that they had from the county for the usage of the beach approach and see whether or not, when you put that in there, that it didn't maybe make more sense to to go with the the signalized intersection. I can tell you, Miriam Giavi has gotten into the numbers a little deeper and, as an engineer, has some some grave concerns about the ability of that thing to operate right as a roundabout with that beach approach. Because you back up cars into a roundabout,
Right.
no traffic.
Right.
You back up cars into an intersection, two directions don't move. John Chaney, the, you know, one of the the traffic ops guy from the county, who's also engineer, you know, kind of echoed Miriam's concerns. So, you know, I think that we're going to, you know, we're not starting over. You know, the city's position has always been, we don't care which one it is, we don't want to see the project delayed. But I think that that is, you know, you know, Secretary Perdue is wasn't aware of that particular model and, you know, he was going to go back and talk with staff about, you know, take another look at it and seeing whether or not that was something that maybe, maybe wouldn't be a better solution for for that specific location.
Thank you for that.
Commissioner Henry?
Three things tonight I want to discuss, and that was, the first thing was, I know the CDC is now recommending that everyone wear masks, and I was wondering if that was something that we as a city would like to put in place. I know a lot of cities are are using that now as a, as an ordinance, temporary ordinance. Everyone is wearing masks, so I was wondering if that was something that we would like to consider to help flatten the curve here in Volusia County or in Daytona Beach. Can't control the county. So that's something that I would like to have a discussion on. And the other thing is, how are we, what are we doing to help test our homeless population? As we know, the homeless population is very fluid and they're constantly moving, and they're constantly moving about in the community. And I think that they are often a forgotten population, but a population that can determine how our numbers, whether they go up or whether they go down in the community. I know that some communities are doing mobile testing of of the homeless population. I think that is something that we really need to consider and look at. I think when when we look at the curve and we say, oh, we flattened it, and then all of the homeless people come out from from the camps that are over in my zone, we're going to see a population that hasn't been tested and hasn't been treated and hasn't gotten what they needed. And it could possibly be very dangerous, or it can be very dangerous for our community. So that's something that I want us to look at and consider. What are we going to do for the homeless community? How are we going to help that community so that it keeps the rest of our residents safe? The third thing that I would like to know is, I know last week we talked about our essential employees and that they were getting the additional forty hours per week, forty hours. But what wasn't clear to me is, is that forty hours?
Eighty.
Eighty? And it's going to be every two weeks?
No, it's just eight. They just got eight.
Okay, so if this continues, are we going to then go back and give them an additional eighty hours? Are, are, because we have non-essential employees that are home and they're getting two-thirds pay, right? Are they getting two-thirds of their, what are they, non-essential?
Everybody's getting paid. No, they're getting a full salary. Nobody's getting half salary.
So the ones that are home are getting full salary?
Yes.
So.
And those that are working are getting full salary plus the, you know, some of them are eighty, part of that eighty bank we got.
Is the eighty, that's all we're going to give them, even if this goes on for another two weeks or another month? Can you clarify that to me and explain to me what's going to happen once they get beyond that point?
We keep track of all that, so we're going to, we're going to review it at the end of this coming week and see where we are and who is in a, who may be in a position and need assistance. We probably won't do it carte blanche for everybody. We're not going to put eighty hours out there, but those that are at the end, we will look at those.
What are, what are some options?
As all, and we'll look at each one of them if we got more than, you know, more than, it's not just looking at one of them, we're going to look at
And the CDC changed the guidelines on that last week as well about, you know, coming back to work and wearing a mask and social distancing that, you know, you weren't just quarantining somebody for fourteen days, you know, because they they had a fever. There's also the rapid tests, which are a little iffy. If you're negative, there's a good chance you're negative unless you were infected in the last day or two. If you're positive, it doesn't mean you're positive. You need to then have a PCR done, the swab test, which, and they're turning, labs are turning the results around a lot faster now. But but you're right, if we have somebody who is out because
Oh, no, I mean for the entire city.
But but
For the city. People are doing it for their city. They're requiring their entire city to wear masks. They're out in public.
No, I'm talking about the eighty hours.
Oh, my eighty hours.
Eighty hours. So so if somebody, you're making a good point, because if somebody got sent home and was home for a couple of days because they had a fever, I think we had two firefighters.
Right.
And they, they both went home, were tested, both came back negative, I believe, but they both missed a couple, at least a shift.
Yes, both firefighters went home because of the health screening process. They were tested, tested negative. They were uncompensated with the city's generous eighty hours that was given to each full-time employee.
And that, but that could happen more than once, and you could run out of the eighty. So I, you know, and that's where, you know, Jim, I appreciate you guys taking a look at that to make sure that nobody ends up because of their job, basically ending up having to eat into their
No, you're misunderstanding. My question is for just our regular essential employees, period.
We're talking for all employees.
But he's talking about if they get, if they get sent home. I'm saying, in 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 addition to their normal pay, our essential employees, what are they getting in addition to their normal pay? Is it just they?
Only getting their normal pay.
So we have people that are home that are getting their normal pay as well?
Yes.
And then we have essential employees who are just getting, you know, I think they they need additional compensation. We have people at, because we have people at home.
Do you think the people at home should not be getting paid?
No, I do not believe that, but I believe we have essential employees who are working, who who are out there on the front lines.
Doing more work. They're doing more work.
Who are doing more work and they're getting the same compensation who are with, as people who are being at home. And we have people who are out on the front lines. I I do believe that they need something.
We have employees, we do have employees that are home. But all those employees are subject to being called back. So they're, and there are employees that are home sometime, and other times they're back here. So it's not like it's a vacation, go take, you know, and a lot of people at home are working from home, too. That they're getting, they have assignments that are, that they're taking care of at home and with either our computers or with their own computers. So it's not like everybody's, you know, I'm, I'm
Oh, I don't think they're on, I don't think they're relaxing in their backyards by the pool, but I don't think they're on the front lines either.
Well, I I guess, what are, are you saying, though, that we should pay the people who are continuing their regular job, something over and above their regular salary because they're working?
I would think so. I I think they need something. No, I do.
I have to go to, you know, it's, 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 this is happening all over the place. You know, everywhere people work, even in the school system. You have some of us who have to go to work, have to go in, some do not, and some work from home.
School system is a lot different.
But I I feel like I'm on the front line when I'm having to be passed out laptops and engaged with the public on a daily basis. I'm, I'm feeling like that's a threat to my health, too. So it's, it is different, but I'm just saying that you have people who, because we're in a crisis, my opinion is the job that you're assigned, especially if you're a public servant, you take on that job and you try to do that job. I'm still receiving the same pay that I would have been receiving. I don't think I should receive more pay because someone else has a different job than, and they they may not be able to have to come in. And I don't want them to come in. You know, I don't want forty teachers on the campus. They got to be home, so so it's less of us on the campus. But, yeah.
I don't agree.
Let Jim explain how this works, because you're going to find that we're doing more than anybody else. Nobody else in this county is treating their employees the way we're treating ours. They're getting fully paid and they're getting, they're not getting docked and being required to use their own personal leave when we're the ones that tell them to go home. We're telling them to go home because it is a public emergency and that's part of their job. And they, most of them don't go, we have some that will, don't have anything to do, sure. But the majority of the people we have that are going home, they're doing work at home for us. They're not just at home. But Jim, why don't you explain?
Jim Sexton, Humanities Services Director. Pardon me. It's not the Corona, I promise. Everybody's like, explain your sneeze, sir. I understand where Commissioner Henry is coming from, because there's, there's two issues. One, as Mr. Chisholm says, we are going above and beyond the way we are treating our employees. We are paying them full one hundred percent. They're not using their own personal leave time. The first two-week closure, we gave everybody eighty hours. And those who did not report to work because we sent them home or we closed, Peabody, Leisure Services, a lot of the non-essential services, those employees got paid that eighty. And the remaining of us who are continuing to report every day or work from home were given that eighty hours to use as a later time. Now we go to, now we expand the closure period. So then those that are working say, well, well, what about me? Because those who are not working are still getting full pay. Now, what we've explained is, if you find yourself in need of time due to this COVID issue, whether you get sick, a family member gets sick, you have to quarantine, you have daycare issues, et cetera, you will be afforded the same benefit as those. You will get one hundred percent of your pay for the entire time that you need to be out. So that's kind of how we're addressing that. And then it's still like, well, but I'm still coming to work, P and L. Public Works, these guys in utilities, they're all coming to work. They're all part of the essential service. We're still making drinking water. We're still going out and reading meters. We're still doing all the things we got to do. So the way we've kind of been explaining it is, we're, we're one large employer and we have several divisions. Some of us more essential, obviously, than others. I'm not going to suggest Peabody and the arts and leisure services aren't essential. However, in a pandemic, they become less essential than some of the other things we do. So what we have to do is keep doing that. So what I've explained is, several of us, about six hundred, seven hundred of us out of the nine hundred and something are pulling the wagon for those right now. Like, we're, we're going to the grind. We're still doing our normal jobs. If we find ourselves in need, we'll have that benefit. But luckily, we work for an essential employer, and we work for an employer who's going above and beyond what federal law even says we have to do. So we have that going for us for, as well. So the way we could look at it is, cup half empty, what's happening for me that I'm still having to work? Why, they're getting paid not to work. Why am I getting paid to work? Our position is, we're fortunate enough to not to be one of the half a billion people on the planet that are out of work right now. So the the non-workers that we're saying is non-essential right now, doesn't mean they're not subject to the callback. We can call them back at any, any time and go, well, we need you. We found something for you to do. So they're out there. The rest of us are kind of pulling the wagon for that crew that's that's non-essential right now. And then when this is all over, we'll all get back in the game and have a big party. That's what we're going to do.
The one thing that may be not, not real clear, that I want to be sure is clear, if an employee is working now while everybody else is out, he still has that eighty hours. He can come back and take that eighty hours at another time. He still has it available to him. So it's not like they're getting, you know, somebody's getting paid to go home, but they still get the same opportunity to use that eighty hours.
Which is above anything I can think of anybody else doing. I can assure you, they're not doing that, you know, where I work. They're not giving any of us eighty hours because we're working and other people are not coming. I would take it, but they're not going to do it.
Without a doubt, in the grocery stores and everywhere, and there's a lot of people on our front lines out there keeping the world going right now. And the the handful of our employees that were able to say, hey, you're not essential, stay home, be safe, self-quarantine, don't go out in public unless you have to, and we hope they're doing their part as well. But then we'll all continue to pull the wagon for them. We're not in the unemployment line. We don't have anybody in the unemployment line waiting to try to get benefits. Like, we're taking care of those employees. And then, you know, as Mr. Chisholm just said, we have that eighty hours. So the employees, like during that first two weeks, we gave you the eighty hours. If you didn't go out on non-essential or you've continued to work and haven't taken any other time off, that's still available to you at the end of the year. Now, there's some things that are going to have to happen with that. So, you know, every year, we have a use it or lose it in our personal leave. So this year, I'm going to be recommended to the city manager that we allow that to roll over. Typically, we, we remove the the leave that's not used, that's supposed to be used. Well, because we've given this extra COVID time, because we've, these frontline employees who are not able just to take time off, we'll, we'll let them roll over their personal leave time. That turns into money. We have a cash-in program that they can use every year, so if we've given you that eighty hours, you can use that in lieu of your personal leave and actually take advantage of the personal leave cash out this year. I mean, there's a lot of things that can be done in addition to the going in above the federal law for the employees that are out right now.
The eighty hours for those who use the eighty hours were up last week, weren't they? Was the two-week period up last week?
So, and I think, and that's kind of where the confusion was. So Commissioner Henry was talking about what about now? So those non-essential employees that are out, they will, the eighty is not a cap. It was when we first went out for two weeks, that was going to be the cap, because we thought everybody would be back to work in two weeks. Now it's another four. Those employees out will still get paid COVID eighty time. Those who can't come to work due to, due to homeschooling issues and things like that, they're getting the full one hundred percent COVID eighty time for as many hours as that going to take. Nobody's used one hour of their own personal leave time or lost one nickel due to the COVID thing. So, so the only thing that's not happening is, we're not earning for those essentials, aren't earning hour for hour the time that Peabody staff, Leisure Services staff are not getting, not working for getting paid. We're not accruing additional time for that. So I, I hope that answered your question. If I missed it, I might, let me try again. Hit me with it again and I'll
I think that's accurate. I mean, we're doing everything we can to keep everybody whole, is what we're trying to do. And not, and we're going way beyond what anybody else is doing. And most, even cities, are cutting back all non-essential employees. They're actually laying some off. And, and what we're doing is, everybody, even if it's a temporary, we're keep, we're paying them even though they're normal, we're paying them normal hours because we're trying to be as fair as possible to everybody here and not contribute to the, to the community problem of people being out of, out of funds to to sustain themselves.
We have sixty-two casual temporary employees right now that are still on the payroll that are not coming into work. So that's to to speak to Mr. Chisholm's statement that even temporaries, the ones we call temporary or seasonal employees, they are continuing to get paid what they would have normally been scheduled during this time. They weren't just furloughed. We had, you know, obviously, a lot of employers are furloughing. We could have, the the easy thing would have been We could have, the, the easy thing would have been to say, okay, all casuals, service is no longer needed, but we didn't do that. We kept them. And now our McKenzie and JR helped pull in that wagon and, and some of the other employees that are still out there in the grind, obviously, police and fire. We are, but we're taking care of our, if you find yourself in need of that leave, it will be there for you as well. Let's hope nobody else needs it, but if it happens, then they'll have that COVID time, AD time, as we call it, to, to use.
But the difference is the essentials now will be able to use that at any time going forward.
Right.
Yes.
Can we talk about your homeless and your city ordinance from us?
I've got one question. Does anybody ask to be furloughed? As far as the $55,000 a year job to be collecting unemployment right now?
Nobody's asked to be furloughed that I'm aware of. We've certainly had employees express concern about coming in. They have underlying health conditions and we've been basically going, you know, to the manager, use some discretion if, if they are on the front line and literally need face-to-face, then let them go. We've done that with our, uh, I think even in the emergency declaration, they're, they're referred to as senior citizens that are at higher risk. We've allowed them to go out and we are paying them the COVID AD time. But I haven't had anybody come up and, and ask to be furloughed because you make a valid point. I mean, if I could go get the, up to 275 a week for Florida and the 600 under federal, I can make 875 a week on unemployment ranks while I'm technically still employed because I would be furloughed. I haven't, I haven't had a volunteer. Nobody wants to try that out. I mean, the, the lines are out the door. Now, once that calms down, maybe I might have some volunteer, but right now we're not. Plus, plus we're paying them 100%, so.
I think we've been fair with everybody and, uh, probably more so than, than most employers.
The other issue, the homeless and, uh, y'all, anybody have any?
Ideas or suggestions?
About how to handle the homeless population during this time?
I have a thought. Um, you know, I'm pretty research-driven, so I guess my recommendation would be that we bring in three people, or one of three. Bring in someone from First Step Shelter, Victoria Falberg, the director there. She'd give us some insight. This coalition, or maybe Buck James. I mean, I've spoken with them throughout the times to find out what's going on, but to have them come in and give a recommendation in terms of what is a good idea to do, um, as opposed to just coming up with something.
We've gotta be careful about getting outside of our job as a city government because that's something that needs to be coordinated probably by the Department of Health.
Sure, I'm, I agree with that.
I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but it's, you know, what you need is you need to, you need to have a bunch of rapid tests. You need to have a bunch of PCRs if you're gonna start just pulling people out of the woods.
And my concern is not to actually give a recommendation, but just to get information from them in terms of what they're doing now or what they intend to do because I myself wouldn't know. That's not my, it's not my thing, but they may know.
The reality is like First Step, we do, we're not taking any new clients.
And, and so we have.
It's for health.
So we have a homeless population that's out there and not getting services, possibly.
That we know of because we don't know.
Recontaminating the community. And, uh, they are an underserved population. Whether it be a city issue or not, I, I, and I know it's a city issue because I, I've been researching it and many other cities are, are looking at it and realizing that that is where they're failing. They're failing in bringing in and ringing in their homeless population. And that's why they're having a hard time flattening the curb. You have those that are just trying to get them in one area and contain them and, and give them tents and, and, and do the best they can. But you have other communities that are out there testing and making sure that they are serving that underserved population.
Who, uh, we need to learn from them. What, what cities are you talking about?
Miami is testing.
Oh, well, they have their own health department.
Miami is, you asked me what cities.
Okay.
So there. So let, wait. Atlanta has, is, is doing testing of, of their homeless population. And some places out in California are, are testing. And I'm sure there are other ones. Those are the ones that I've read about. So it is happening and you can't talk it down. I know you wanna walk it back and, and take it back this way, but the fact of the matter is.
No, no, I'm looking for a solution and you're looking for pointing the finger at somebody.
No, I'm not pointing.
Reality is.
Who am I pointing the finger at?
Be coordinated. This is not something.
But who am I pointing the finger at? Nope. Tell me who I'm pointing the finger at. I only simply said you, we can't walk it back.
And we should, in this case, we need to be partnering with other people in Volusia County, particularly the Health Department and the hospitals to figure out what is a solution, because I totally agree with you that this is a hornet's nest that we've gotta be real careful with. You know, but this is not something the city of Daytona Beach can do, manage in a way that will have any meaningful effect on the community at large.
Yeah, which is why I said we could talk about it and come up with what can be done, was my question. My question was what can we do? How can we serve that underserved population? And I brought the question back to the commission, not for the City of Daytona Beach to do it. If, if, if we can partner with a, a different agency in the community, if we can partner with the Health Department. It is something that needs to be talked about and we do need to see how it can be done.
I agree. This conversation needs to happen.
And I'm not even, I'm not even there yet. For me, it's just a matter of can we just get some more information about our actual community? Find out who's doing what already. And the key people to me would be Jeff White with the Homeless Coalition to see if he would come in and give us an overview of what they're doing. They're, they may already be managing it because I know I was in touch with him last week to coordinate with the restaurant to provide food for them. So there are things going on, but, um, I think we need to meet with or have him come in and do a little presentation on what is actually happening.
Why do you come in here to do any presentations right now?
He could do it online. He could do it online. Yeah.
They just need to send a presentation.
Yeah, and that's fine, but I mean, I agree with Commissioner Henry 100%, but there's information that is going on that we could do it locally and kind of target the, whatever it is. And we could just be just letting everybody know what is happening. How's that? But we need the information.
I think you brought some very good points, but I, I kinda agree with, there's probably is some issue with the homeless population we don't know about. But there's also, uh, agencies that are responsible for that. And Drew, you're on a board that deals with that, with the, uh, coalition?
Yeah, I'm on a board there.
Yeah.
Volusia Flagler Continuum of Care, which is the homeless board. Right now, just so you're aware, in Volusia County, Volusia County is going under contract with four area hotels for congregate living, uh, for those individuals that might test positive and need a place to locate. Right now, any homeless that we visit on, from a field perspective, from EMS, if they meet the criteria, they're going through the testing process. Because right now, no one is being tested outside of CDC criteria unless it's the antigen test that you spoke of earlier that is very, uh, right now, it's too premature to see its positive effects.
That's great.
So that's going on currently?
Yes, right now, as of Volusia County's Tuesday, uh, yesterday update, they're currently under negotiations with four area hotels for congregate living.
Okay, and who's, who's testing?
Who, who? Okay, yeah.
As far as the testing right now between the Florida Department of Health, Advent Health, we have a new, um, location that's out at the dog track right now, um, Florida Health Source. But they're doing it based on meeting criteria, not just coming with a random person without, uh, being symptomatic.
You said, um.
Antigen testing?
No, no, um. Terms of hotels, who's, the counties on the?
Yes, Volusia County utilizing, um, for this aspect, they're using the emergency service grant funds that they've received to explore using hotels for that congregate pers- purpose.
Well, you're really answering the question that she's trying to address. And that's the direction that, you know, because I, I think it's, it's, it's fair to say that, you know, we, we can't. And I realize this very, from the very beginning. It wasn't really something that I felt we had the purview or the resources to address, but if we worked or talked or communicated or found who was, had the resources. So the county has a pocket of money to help address this issue.
Yes, sir.
Is what you're saying.
Yes.
So the CARES, that CARES Act for the, the state local government? I was trying to figure out what they could spend that $100 million on because that's what the county's getting because we have, since we have over half a million people in Volusia, they get a direct allotment from the federal government. And I couldn't.
How much?
It's, it's 90 some odd million dollars.
90 million?
Yeah.
I didn't know it was that much.
It's a, it's a lot.
It was a lot.
And so thi- this actually came off the Department of Treasury website. It is expenses that are, are necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to coronavirus disease 2019. Two, uh, were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March 27th, 2020, uh, the date of enactment of the CARES Act, um, you know, for the state or government. And number three, were incurred during the period that begins March 1st, 2020 and ends December 30th, 2020. So it's pretty broad, but like, they're not gonna be able to go build a bridge or repay the street with that money. But they're, but what, what the chief is talking about are exactly the kind of things that they can do with these dollars. You know, they've been talking about.
Extend their rent assistance program to include our city?
They'll, it's county-wide.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, they, they need to spend the money. It's not for unincorporated Volusia County. It's for all of Volusia County. And I do know that they have, they're, they're working very hard on figuring out how to spend that money on programs to help, uh, help people eat, you know, different type of, of, uh, food bank type programs.
So if it's county-wide, is it something that each city has to say, look, this is our need, this is how many people we have?
It's up to the county.
They, they're go, do we have to speak with Ms. Wheeler to have her lobby on behalf of Daytona Beach or anything like that?
Well, I think I've been, Jim, talk to Rattenwald.
Okay.
This would be the, the first place to go because at this point, I don't wanna, I, I think we wanna make sure they know what the, what the needs are. And this is a great point of something that, that might be, uh, in need of some, some additional funding. Not only for, from the aspect of, of, uh, the housing piece of it or, 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 you know, feeding, but the, the healthcare part of it as well. So, but, you know, like I said, I, I'm sure they don't know at this point what they can and can't do with the money. And I doubt they even have it in the bank yet. But, you know, the, this is an opportunity for us to address some of these issues with underserved populations, which, you know, should be beneficial.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll pursue both cases. I think the, it's one thing to identify the homeless population, it's another thing to get an agency to test, to do the testing. So it's not just as easy as testing. So you gotta have the right people, you gotta have the right equipment. They gotta be protected as they do it. So, uh, but that's something I'm gonna oppose to the county and, um, see how they, and if they have, uh, designed a program that would, uh, um, you know, address that need. And the second one, I've already talked to them once about rental housing and rental assistance. And, um, that was before they got this 900 million, or 90 million, excuse me. That's a little exaggeration. 90 million.
That's a lot of money.
Yeah, but, and they were trying to figure out how to use it, so we're gonna see if we can help them, uh, use it. But, uh, it, it's totally their discretion. You know, they have total discretion over what they, how they wanna do it. Now, the con, I think the, the framework of it, you can't use it for everything. You have to use it for, uh, the CARES, uh, you know, a specific goal. And that is dealing with the, um, the illness and what it's causing in the communities. You gotta have, you gotta tie everything back to, to that. And, um, so that's gonna be the challenge they have.
And then I'm curious about the ordinance for the masks.
It's just, uh, quite a few cities are requiring, oh, sorry. Quite a few cities are requiring their residents to wear masks when they're out in public. And, um, I was just wondering if that was something that we had thought about, had anybody else saw it and, and done any additional research on it. I, I, I don't know how it could be implemented because we want to make sure we have enough masks out there for citizens to buy or to get a hold of. Some cities are just passing them out. They have their police officers passing them out in, in public and, and all. So, um, just something that I thought maybe could be interesting for us to discuss.
I can add to this, ma'am. I don't mean to interrupt.
Okay.
But I have looked into the, the other, uh, communities, particularly in South Florida, adopting a mask requirement. I happened to pull up the one from Miami-Dade. I can read it to you just as an example of what some of the.
Can you make sure your mic is?
Osceola did one.
Osceola's done it as well.
And then they revised it. They, they put in requiring it and then they found out, well, they were arresting people or harassing people and they, they revised it to make it just voluntarily.
You don't wanna harass people. I don't want anybody harassed. But a lot of times people won't.
Do it if it's not a.
And then they won't do it if they don't have access to it. So you definitely don't want them harassed.
I think that's the biggest problem is access, having, having them available. Because I don't think, we don't have them available, you know, that would be, you know, readily, uh, out there. I mean.
Healthcare and first responders are gonna run out of PPE in about six weeks.
Right.
So if we wanted to make that run out in two weeks, we could do, you know.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that at all. Whatever we do, it would have to be outside of.
Yeah, it would have to be outside of us, yes.
For that. I mean, if you want us to look at getting some, some of these masks and see what the cost is and, uh.
You, you won't. So if it's a, like a surgical mask, a loop mask, or like an, an N95 or the KN95.
Yeah, don't do this.
You're not gonna get them.
No.
Well.
They're, they're part of that strategic supply.
Right.
And the government is, you know, you got Robert Kraft wants to fly to China and buy you 2 million of them and you, you know.
You gotta get them back here. You can't get them back here.
But he get, but, but he ended up getting them all to first responders and in hospitals. It was, you know, they didn't go to them. But there are other, you know, people are using bandanas and everything to, to, there's always a little spraying.
You could make your own. I mean, they could make their own.
Well, my, 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 my idea is not for us to be responsible to give them out, but if officers ran into someone instead of harassing that person, I, I would give them a mask as opposed to harassing them and dragging them off and carting them off to jail. But for the most part, making it where people provide their own masks, not the City of Daytona Beach provides masks for them.
So is this just like a recommendation?
But I'd like to hear the ordinance, I'd like to hear what you have.
It's just a recommendation.
Yeah, let's let, uh, because I, he did let me know that he'd had this and I've had a lot of residents who were concerned. And I will say this, I've, I was a little concerned that I think, you know, we might be able to find them. I had some senior citizens, uh, in my calls out. That's the, oddly enough, the number one thing that senior citizens asked me for.
Was masks.
Were masks. They, that's the number one thing and I've made, you know, probably 300, 400 calls in the last, uh, week.
So.
And that's the number one thing they've asked me for.
I will tell you what, I had a client make 79 of these. We're trying to make 400 for Windsor Mealy. And they're reusable and I had a, I had a quilter make them for me. And then I shopped it around and I found a seamstress who would do them for $4 per unit for a total of 200 units. But we're working on right now as a little group, making 400 of them for Housing Authority. So it's a nice little project and the design is very simple. But it might be something that we do more as a church project, as a sorority fraternity project. Sit down, get your sewing machines out and go to work.
I actually got a phone call from Tampa this past weekend, um, uh, where someone was asking, did we want masks? And that they had connections out of New York for the, what is it, 95?
K9.
K95 for 650. And, oh, what did I say? I think you had to order them. It must have been 650 because you had to order.
Thank you.
No, I just wanted to offer, so.
Just so we could be clear about everything, face coverings would be the fabric. That's what we're doing. That's what we would encourage. Right now, Volusia County, yesterday, they took up the same topic and encouragement was the route they chose to go. Likewise, all Volusia County municipalities are kinda go, trying to go similar route, um, to encourage face coverings, uh, not masks.
So what is that?
Face covering is that, uh, homemade. As far as the mask that you referenced from Tampa, I've been getting emails daily, um, multiple throughout the day, but there's a lot of scam artists out there right now. You spend the money, they put you on back order, you never see the masks.
No, I know this person personally.
And not tested.
And the, and the masks were coming from New York. She called me from, she's political in, involved in Tampa and was asking, did I know or did we want access to some masks? That, that she had a connection.
And right now, KN95 masks have come onto the market, um, with the temporary approval through the FDA. But they're not tested to our standards, so they're not to be really used in a clinical setting. But they could be, they're more respirator masks than they are, uh, the surgical mask type.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what I was just getting.
And that was my thing, maybe recommending covering, not just masks per se. Maybe I was, um, not as clear on that. But maybe that would be, maybe a recommendation would be good, but I still would like to hear what.
Just hear the Miami.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. Uh, what was done down in Miami-Dade County, it, it did apply to facial coverings and not masks. It expressly said that the N95 rated mask should not be used. I think obviously because that takes it away from, uh, those professionals that need them, uh, for emergency services. But the language, um, from Miami-Dade is, is as follows. Persons working in or visiting grocery stores, restaurants, pharmacies, construction sites, public transportation vehicles, vehicles for hire, and locations where social distancing measures are not possible shall wear facial coverings as defined by the CDC. And the next section goes further to say, uh, facial coverings, uh, may include either store-bought or homemade and it has a link to a site for how to make them.
And, and you say somebody can make that one for $4?
No, we're doing this for free.
No, but it can be made for $4.
It can be made for $4 per.
It wouldn't, yeah.
Exactly. If we did a unit of 200, it might drop. And not somebody local, it's a seamstress on Seabreeze. But I'm sure there are many tailors out there where if we had a bid and we said, hey, we need this many, we could probably get it for less. But it'll be made local, you know? Yeah, that's Sophie. Yeah, yeah, Sophie. I keep everything local. But this was made as a project with one of my clients, and now she's made it very simple for us to all just sit at home. And that's what we do, just keep making them. In our spirit.
Facial covering.
Okay. I, I, I'm concerned about, you know, I'm, even when I'm in the grocery store, because some people, if you don't say something, people won't respond. One thing I've learned about this whole pandemic is that people respond to what they are told is important. If they're not told that this is an important thing, a lot of times, they just, they, why would I respond just because I sort of hear it? It doesn't mean that everything has to be mandated, and I know that we were heavy-handed. And I'm, I'm okay with initiating, initiating it with a start by, by saying that this is something that we, we, we would strongly suggest that all of our residents would, would do. But I, I don't know how that works.
Are we, are we still doing public service announcements? Just like, are we still doing anything like that? I'm not sure. Are we still marketing it, like, on the radio and saying, these are some of the things that we're instilling? So it's just paper right now? But is it like?
We're not doing anything, we're, I don't think we're doing anything electronically right now, unless we got one statement.
Media from our communications department, since March 13th, they've done 136 postings on our various social medias, 81 on Facebook, 47 on Instagram, 97 on Twitter, and so on and so forth. And Dr. Durham continues to be on Joy FM, live from his living room. In addition to maintaining our website also.
So in banner ads, things like that, it's an easy marketing tool that we could use. I'm sure we're probably already doing that as a public service from Daytona Beach that we recommend it. Just a thought.
Yeah, I think we could promote it.
But, yeah, do, so, how would we promote it? Because I understand that getting it done, this is a conversation, the county, there's no need in us going beyond the county. What I, you know, no need in this case, because it's just not going to work. But then, they're not, they're just suggesting it, right?
Right.
Yes, at yesterday's meeting, they elected to come out as an encouragement to wear facial coverings, as opposed to a mandate, because it would be labor-intensive for our law enforcement officials to go around and speak with people.
We're always behind. Hold on a second. Commissioner Delgado.
Yes, sir.
Did you have anything to weigh in on this matter?
I've been listening very carefully, everything going back before. I was doing some research on the whole wearing masks in public. Because I, I, you know, that's the new thing to me as far as, you make some good points about people get apprehensive when you walk into a store with a mask on. You know, I, I kind of brought this up last time about, you know, some of the concerns I have with, you know, a lot of these orders and the enforceability and whether there'll be a, you know, a tool for harassment, things like that. And, you know, I, from listening to the dialogue, it seems like the other commissioners are kind of, I think we're all kind of in the same place on a lot of these same issues. I don't know that it makes a lot of sense to pass a whole bunch of, you know, aspirational things, like you should do this, or you should do that, and create a sense that that gives, you don't want to have rules that you can't enforce. It makes, or that you don't enforce. You know, we've gone through and cleaned up our rules and our regs over the years. I think you want to have them, I, I don't see a need to legislate or ordinate some of these things. So that's really what I've been thinking about, is just, you know, these orders, like, for example, having to wear a mask or not wearing a mask. You know, I don't know if that, if that's something that we really need to be getting involved in. So I was, I'm on board with a lot of what's been said. I don't have any, I don't have any personal desire to see, you know, any kind of additional, like, legal requirements for things that are, you know, optional, this should be optional, like whether you want to wear a mask or whatever. I think it just creates potential problems. But, uh, that's really all I have to kind of say in response to that. And just, just like I said, I'm just trying to find myself about wearing masks in certain locations.
Yeah, the CDC's language is advising the use of simple cloth face coverings to slow the spread of the virus and help people who may have the virus and do not know it from transmitting it to others. Cloth face, face, face coverings fashioned from household items or made from home, from common materials at low cost can be used as, as an additional voluntary public health measure. So, I mean, it's, this was out put out on April 3rd.
I'm okay with.
Mr. Mayor, I would specifically, look, there's actually a statue on the book from 19, a Florida statue from 1951 that says you can't wear a mask, hood, or other device on public property. That's actually what I was thinking about while you guys were having that discussion.
And, and.
I don't know if that's been brought up anywhere, but Mr. Jagger can probably, can probably look at that. But that was, that was what I was thinking about. I don't know, I don't know how the legality of those kind of orders have held up in other areas.
Well, well, I don't think that that would really be something that during this time we would have to worry about, even though it's on the books, since we are basically as a society telling people we want them to wear masks.
Right, I understand. That was, I mean, that was the main thing I was looking at, is I just wanted to make sure that everything was in conformity. But that's just something that I, has been troubling me about all this for a while, just making sure that I thought through all the legal implications of everything.
Okay.
Just one thing to answer. Our social media, the city's social media posted over an hour ago about face coverings following the CDC guidelines. And just so you know, the outreach of our social media, since March 13th, we've connected with 203,000 people and had 58,000 direct engagements.
That's good. I just wanted to say something. So far, I, I, I kind of flinch when I hear words like harassment used as relates to the police department, only because I know they're doing a really good job. I think that they're being very kind to citizens. I've heard citizens, you know, say that the police have helped them out. I mean, that term bothers me a bit. Yeah, it's just bothering me a bit, so.
We don't harass people in this city. Here's what we do do. We run to danger while the people are running away. We deliver food to people in your zone who needs it out of our own pocket. That's what we do. We deliver masks to people, elderly people in these zones that need it and 95 minutes. That's what we do here at Daytona. We don't harass people. And it's getting kind of old, because I hear it in emails and I hear it here. And it just sends a bad message to the men and women of this police department that bust their butt every day for this city to get a default button and say we harass people. It just doesn't happen here. So it's getting old, that's all.
Thank you for bringing that up, Chief. Thank you.
I haven't been hearing that.
I haven't been hearing it either, but we just said that we didn't want people to feel like they were being attacked or harassed. I don't think it was.
For wearing masks.
Yeah, for wearing masks. I don't think it was a punch at our particular police department. I don't believe that at all. I think we're all very, very proud of the job that our police department does. And I don't think we can just jump up and just feel like, oh, you're, you're saying the word harassment. I feel like, nobody feels that way. I don't feel that way. Even if I use the word harassed, I don't feel that way. I, I said what I said, and I mean what I said, as far as, I don't want people to feel like, a few weeks ago, two people were inside the Walmart store and they were arrested for wearing masks. Although the order was you had to have one. It wasn't, it wasn't a suggestion. The order was you must wear a mask. And two people were arrested. Two, two men walked inside a Walmart and they were arrested for having on the mask. The mayor then had to come back and put a, a order in place that says we're not going to enforce the, the order that.
Wearing the mask?
Wearing the mask. That, Atlanta, Keisha, Atlanta and Keisha Lance Bottoms had to walk it back. So she came back and she said, I, I've instructed my police department, please do not go back and enforce the order of, because it was against the law to wear masks. It's against the law to wear masks. But two people were arrested, but at the time, it was required to wear masks. So that's what I mean.
Well, we police with common sense here in Daytona Beach. I don't care what they do in Atlanta and these other cities, but we met with all our people, and we get it. We're like, look, even the rules, the stuff that you wanted to enforce last week, we're not enforcing. We're not going out here to harass people because they're driving their cars attendant like to get milk. We ain't got time for, we, we know the bad guys, what they're doing when they're lurking behind a business at 2, 3 o'clock in the morning with a crowbar in our hand. Those are the ones we're targeting, not the mom and pop going to get a gallon of milk or running the kids to get sick. We, we police common sense. We train, we do nothing but train. So that's why we, we have such a great relationship, when we have citizens calling us day and night for help. They're calling the police department, and we're helping them. And we're spending a lot of money out of our own pockets, too.
We know, and, and you sound like you feel attacked, but I'm not attacking you.
I'm not feeling attacked, I just don't like the word harassed, because it's not happening. Not here.
It happens. And, and, and we're talking as a whole.
I gotta just say, you're talking as a whole, and anybody can make a situation, just, let's not take it too personal. It's not, it's not a personal thing. Okay. All right. Any other comments on the issue of the mask?
So are we going to push this in our media, in our social media, just saying, wear covering?
Okay. And let me, I'll figure a way to, we should all figure ways through our various mediums to push it, because we think that it's something that our residents should be doing.
Yeah, save lives.
I'm trying to do it myself as much as possible. Do you have anything else, Commissioner? Okay. Mr. Reed?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to kind of, not really piggyback, but once again, we have a situation where we won't necessarily be the ones that, that conquer the, the solution, but we perhaps need to talk to someone who can. And, and that's the letter that we got from Terry Bates in regards to how this affects the African-American community. And I know some, I'm loving the stats that you're sharing with us, that it's not that bad yet. I would just like to keep, keep track of what our stacks, stats continue to look like. Because, you know, diabetes, high blood pressure, the 65 years and older, that 32114 Zone 6 that flooded with Housing Authority residents, just a great concern. You know, this is a walking community, bicycle community. I'm not seeing that many people wear masks. So just keeping up with those numbers to see that if it does continue to grow. I, I piggybacked on the letter that she wrote to Advent Health, asking them to perhaps consider having some testing in the Zone 6 area. She has offered a couple of sites where she'd be willing to let that be done. So if it comes to that point, I'd rather be proactive than reactive. And you continue to give us great numbers, so thank you for that, Chief. Did we miss a cycle on the water bill deduction?
No.
No.
Because my bill was $95.
That was last, that was for the previous month.
Oh, I pay my bill on time.
No, no, it comes different.
It's a different cycle. It started the week after yours.
Oh, because, you know, Ruth and I didn't get it. We were like.
I got it.
You did get, oh, you got it now? Oh, because you didn't have it two weeks ago.
Part of it.
A part of it. Well, I just want to be able to pay the whole bill and know that I did a discount rather than just paying it nor it didn't benefit anybody. All right. And then, dun, 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 dun. I think that's it for me. I really was just concerned about that, and then I wanted to say something about the bill, and I think that's it.
Well, we've covered a lot of ground for a special meeting. And I just want to remind us all that the language that we use is a, is a tool to get us to the place that we want to get to. And we're all here to serve, and, you know, sometimes things can get a little sensitive, but, you know, let's just remember we're all on the same team. Do we have any additional questions or comments from anyone? Okay.
Wait, give your face covering while you're out. Wear your face covering.
Yes. Wear your face covering, and this meeting is adjourned.